Thank you, and then it comes back to me.
Our speaker, the person that's going to say...
Carmen.
Yeah, she's not here, so...
No.
Well, like Lindsay said, we'll go in if she gets here before then.
Honestly, it doesn't surprise me, but...
Well, I have to say good.
Anyway, all right, well, hey, the good news is that it's supposed to get forty degrees this week, so we're gonna melt all this snow.
We are.
All right, six o'clock, please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, all board members are present, as well as Superintendent Hunstead and our district guru, Torkel. Torkel. Any changes to the agenda?
Uh, there is none.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
No.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, public comments, rebel recognition, rebel recognition. Congratulations to the boys' football team on a tremendous season. I mean, going to the bank twice in a row, that's an amazing accomplishment for a program, so... Hope these young guys had a good time and a good experience, so...
Yes, very much.
Anything else?
I wanted to give a shout out to Cindy Malar. On the staff development day on Wednesday, a bunch of people that I know, myself included, received personal notes about the students because she said without structured conferences, she wanted to make sure that they still heard, parents still heard how their kids were doing, so... I would imagine that took a lot of time and effort to write personal notes, because my kid's name was right in there, so I thought that was pretty great.
It was, I was at their staff meeting in the morning, and it was one of the things we talked about a year ago or whatever when we set this calendar, is that this gives them an opportunity to reach out to those they didn't want to reach out to, so kudos to the teachers to step up and do it. I talked to Kent in the morning, he said it's going very well, so... Yeah, great, great to hear.
And how was the play, David?
Play was great, and it was well attended every night, it went every night. And yeah, they just did a wonderful job. They had a lot of seniors that graduated last year, and so it was... Not sure what you're gonna get, but the kids just really did a wonderful job.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it was a, it wasn't like last year was a comedy, so it was, you know, a lot of fun, this one was a more serious topic, but yeah, they did a great job, so... I also want to do a shout out for the powwow that we had at both sites. John Dumars and Wayne Lepard did a lot of work on that, and John primarily bringing, he's from the Sisseton area of South Dakota, and that's where his connection was, and that's the group that came up to do it for the high school and the elementary, you can watch it on YouTube if you didn't see it. Just a great, a great program, great for our kids, a lot of dance and a lot of song with the drums. And like Brittany said, her kids were talking about it quite a bit just because of the interaction. Then they got the kids down on the floor and got them to do a little bit with them, so... Just very, a very nice program.
I thought it was fun that the high school kids even got involved, because sometimes, you know, they can be too cool at that age to do something outside of their comfort zone, and a lot of them were out there.
Yeah, so kudos to John and Wayne for getting that set up, and then John for that connection with South Dakota, so yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, it was a great event.
Anything else? All right, let's move on to reports, six point one, world's best workforce report.
Yeah, so this typically is done by December fifteenth is when it's due to the state.
Replanting roads.
Yep, I'm gonna have you turn around, I'll show it to you here. Wayne is out with his replacement. So Brittany and Mary Ann and him, they've been talking to him on the phone a little bit and got this completed, and I said I'd present, they had a letters training tonight, so they were gonna be at that. Anyway, this is typically done and is due by December fifteenth, like I was saying. Our board meeting's not until December eighteenth, it has to be approved by the fifteenth, so I said, well, we got a crash course, let's get it done. So this is, this is the report, so world's best workforce, you gotta do this every year. It's our goals for preparing for kindergarten, so we'll talk about that. All students ready for kindergarten, or ready for school? So we already talked, I visited with them last week and today again about increasing our percentages. So we have our three-year-olds screened, it was nineteen about. There were four-year-olds, there was thirty-four, and five-year-olds, there were twenty-one, so our percentage is like twenty-six percent of our kids are getting screened. You can see our new goal for next year, I said, we gotta have it at fifty percent. We gotta make phone calls then if we need to. Because parents don't know what they don't know sometimes, so if the communication is poor, that's on us, and I would guess that's our issue. I mean, if you say, hey, can you bring your three-year-old, we're gonna do some screening to see how they're ready for, doesn't mean you have to go to preschool. We're not saying you have to go to preschool, that's not what this is about. We just need to have a measurement to see how we're doing and how our kids are going, and then maybe a parent would say, hey, might be a good idea to have them go to preschool, so... That's what this is about, this first one is making sure they're ready. Our screenings are just not where we should be, and so, good, let's address it and improve, right? Uh, next, yikes, did I just jump there? No, that's right. Next one is students reading at grade level by third grade. One thing I always need to remind people, when the MCAs were designed, they were designed for a school system to check on how their reading program is doing, how their math program is doing. It wasn't designed for an individual test. But of course, like anything, now it's an individual test. Well, how do my son do, how do my daughter do, how do they do, where are we at? And in even schools, because we get scored on it, but it, the design, the original design was to say, how are your programs? Are they weak, are they strong, do they need to be changed? Well, we've known for a few years here, our language art stated to be updated, and that's what we're doing. So the goal was forty percent to be proficient, and we were thirty-eight point one, so... It's an awful number. I'll just be honest with you, I don't like that number at all. For the first time, we're actually doing something on purpose in our language, that's not fair. It's been a long time since we've had a comprehensive focus. There's been a lot of good things happening in the past, but they haven't been across the whole board, so some teachers have done a phenomenal job of teaching reading, but then they go to a different teacher and that teacher teaches it different. So now we have a language issue, right, so the words are different, it's confusing. It doesn't mean it was wrong, doesn't mean it was bad, it was just different. So we have to have it, you know, it's like anything, if you run the same offense year after year after year after year, people are more efficient at running it. Doesn't matter what sport you play, right? If you know what you're doing, it's easier. So that's the concept now, so we've, they've gone through their letter training, we have a new curriculum, and all go through the training together, and that's K5, so it's gonna be a consistent language, so it typically takes three years to get all that ingrained into the teacher and/or the student. So I'm looking forward to the spring, actually, to see how these scores are gonna change, but we were, we didn't meet our goal. Um, I thought we had a new goal here, maybe it's...
It's fifty percent there.
There it is, okay, yeah, same thing, I said, let's just... And we should get it, I really feel good that we're gonna get it, and which is a little bit of a stretch, because new curriculum, sometimes we're learning another new language, right, so... When they say this, this is, do I understand it as a student? That's our goal, and then we're gonna see sooner than later, but like I said earlier, usually it does take, the first year the teacher's trying to figure out, what should I teach and not teach? Second year, they're starting to get that dialed in, but now the kids are starting to learn, and then the third year, they usually start to grasp it, typically. Um, close the achievement gap between student groups. So now this is free and reduced lunch, I believe is what this one is, yeah. Okay, so you gotta, you have to, for the state, you gotta define some groups. Well, we have a free and reduced population, and we have a non-free and reduced population. And there was quite a disparity, and this is one of the things, we wanted to close the achievement gap. That's, I personally am not a super big fan of this, so if our non-free and reduced lunch will get a worse, a poorer grade, and the others do better, so that's good. We closed the gap, what good is that? You know, so we wanna see increases across the board typically, but we had to show the differences, and I said, here, our free and reduce was twenty-eight percent, and our non-free and reduce is at forty-nine percent.
Is this proficiency in reading?
Yes, this is, so... Our free and reduced lunch students are performing more, and that's quite a gap. So we wanna close the gap, and I just said, decrease it from twenty percent difference accounting. Okay, this is just data for state, this is data for us, it's a measuring tool, but... Or the other thing that you notice here is families had to pay for meals, which may have skewed the data. Because we went through this, you didn't have to pay, now you had to pay, now we're going back, you don't have to pay again, how many people are filling? Is our free and reduced lunch data even correct? I mean, that's skewed, why? Because I didn't fill out the form? You're talking about moving targets, right, and so this one's a little, uh-huh, not super sold on it, but it is... At the state level, you have to show, you have to have some identified groups, that's one of them, okay? The other thing here, we did special ed, non-special ed, sped. Well, if you've heard any chatter about this, is there's more and more sped parents opting out of the test. We already know he or she's not gonna pass. Why do we have to take the test to make them feel bad, feel dumb, feel whatever? This is where the state is missing a little bit here. And so, okay, now we're working with what? Population, is it, this number's gets skewed again because of those variables, but... Ours, you can see, our sped kids, how can they be proficient, we already know they're, you know, anyway? Fifteen percent success, our non-special ed, we're forty-seven, okay, well, there's a reason, right? We're helping these kids, would we like that someone to be hired? Sure, that's something we should be doing. Are our sped students increasing, are we getting better scores there?
Yeah.
Obviously, we want our non-special ed to be hired, those are things we're working with this new curriculum as well, so... Yeah, anyway, I'll just leave that there. Another one, this is free and reduced lunch, this is probably the math one. One's math, one's reading, it's the same thing. So this report is on the website, because it has to be posted, I told Brittany to post it today. You didn't approve it yet, but we're gonna be looking at it tonight, I just want it done and it's out there. So if you wanna get into the depth, or anybody else that wants to, that's watching, ask questions about it, they can look at these gaps and at the report. If they have any questions, they can call me, so... You guys wanna look at it and get more into it, you don't understand it, feel free, okay? So those are those kind of ongoing goals there. Next one is career ready by graduation. One of the things that our goal was is to increase our offerings in high school and/or middle school, and you can see our list. So this is stuff that we've added to offer more CTE for our students, we are, and we just said, we're gonna continue to constantly analyze this and to potentially get more work-based learning, and so how can that be implemented in the future? Something we're looking at. But yeah, sort of constantly analyze that where we're at. And then the last one is graduation rates. We had a hundred percent last year, which is outstanding. Our goal was ninety-five, I said, let's keep it at ninety-five. One kid doesn't graduate, for whatever reason, and sometimes they just moved out at the last minute. Well, you can't control that, so...
Do we, is this the report where we keep the kids no matter where they're at?
Yes, yeah, you, there's a window of time.
Okay.
That, okay, so if they left or whatever, and then they don't graduate there, they're still our student? I can't remember, that's true, David, I don't remember the timeline. Is it like halfway through the year, is it, I can't remember, but there is, oh, that's tied to it a little bit too. So you don't, you can't control this number necessarily when you get into the ninety percentiles. Obviously, you don't wanna be at seventy percent, there's an issue with your school system, right? And so, kudos to our district and their parents and their families for taking school seriously. That's awesome, we graduated from high school has a significant impact on career earnings as we know, so... Uh, and then, okay, Linden Felton Elementary was one of the issues with our Hispanic families. Didn't score as well, so then we got on this achievement and integration by the state. There's thresholds, there's a certain number of populations, and if you get to that threshold, we're like one or two students over it, and then they look at your score. Now that we're combined, we think that percentage has gone down, because it didn't affect our Dilworth School, it affected just our Linden Felton, and now as we're together, our numbers are probably gonna get us out of the A and I, because what happened is, is our Hispanic group did not score in relation to our non-Hispanic students to the level that the state, based on this threshold, qualified. So my last two schools, we didn't have enough students, so it didn't matter how they scored because they were measurable, because there didn't need that quota or that threshold. So we have a bunch of goals in here, this is where the School of Excellence from Lake Country Service Co-op is working with our district, because that's what gets, then you get assigned through your cooperative to have support to figure out how we can meet any of these students. They've been working with it, like I said, we already know, because number one, elementary, that we won't be dinged as, it's highly unlikely that we would be dinged after this year. But once you're in it, it's a three-year plan, program, so we're still in it. And so we have a bunch of goals, again, I don't need to get into all the, but if you wanna see it, anybody wants to read it, feel free, it's all there, and it's posted on our website, and it's under District, and I think it's the bottom button, world's best work, it's W...
It has its own, yeah.
Yeah, it has its own spot, click it, it'll take you right to the report. So anybody who wants to read that or has questions, well, so then you gotta have a lot of narratives explaining, what are you doing, what aren't you doing, and that's what this is all about. We have very specific things that are happening with our interventionists, with our ELA, EL teachers, with our different groups in our curriculum. It's just, it's just more comprehensive, I guess, I'll probably use it to say it that way, but... Okay, um, and that's the bottom. Many schools, you don't have to do the A and I, because you don't qualify, and I foresee us in the future not even having to do that piece. Again, they're both on the website, there are links to the website, and the AI part is just at the bottom of the world's best workforce. They say you should have two links, we just have the one link, it takes you to both of them, so... Okay? Questions?
One quick question.
Yeah?
So in third grade, I want to say supplies to all of elementary, that they're now spreading the kids out to different teachers within third grade that are in different levels of where they're at in their reading comprehension, so...
There, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, so then, is this, is this gonna be something that's gonna be measurable in the springtime with, like, different testing, to see if that sort of method is healthy?
Uh, well, what I was told, and then this is something we're gonna talk about next year too, I suppose I can sit down. Is they're trying to get their groups, they're trying to meet the kids more where they're at, which, don't get me wrong, they're already doing that in the classroom, but it's easier now when I have, this whole group is at the same level, where we can focus on the same thing, so it's easier for that teacher to set curriculum. They're not doing it for the whole reading program, but they're taking, I think it's a half hour, and you guys could correct me if I'm wrong, that they're plucking in for part of that time to get focused on the skills that they're deficient in, or they excel at, or wherever they're at. So what we're hoping to see is, it's because it's more pointed and more focused, that we're gonna see a better growth number.
Okay, and that'll be measurable this spring?
Yeah, it'll actually be measurable this winter, they'll do the start test, I think it's in January, and the start test from the fall till even early winter, January, I guess would be mid-winter, probably. They should show some growth there, we're hoping, because we've been doing it now again, it's new, but... Because it's more focused, you know, I need work on my free throws, so I just go work on free throws more. Should be better, but that's really the focus here. And so I'm hopeful and excited to see, in fact, the admin and teachers are excited to see what the start test shows in January.
This is like for second, third, fourth, third?
That goes all through the elementary, yeah, that goes through sixth grade, I think, at least through fifth grade.
Is every grade breaking out like that into, into some...
I don't think they all are, they're just, they're just getting this started, and it's been a strategy they've been talking about doing, and there are some grade level meetings, and the grade level teachers have decided to do it. So I apologize, I think, I know first grade is. It sounds like third grade is, and maybe they are now, starting to all do it, I can't speak to that right now.
I don't think second, fourth, because that's where my kids are, and I haven't heard that. They're all very chatty about...
Okay, yeah, I know that some grade level meetings and PLC meetings, they've talked about having that strategy. I know the interventionists have been playing a major part of that too, and have recommended that to get more focused, because obviously when they focus, they have their focus group too, right, so...
So assuming it works, maybe it's something everyone would do moving forward?
Yep, I already, I will be presenting something to you guys soon about next year's schedule and how we can get a half hour of focus time at the end of the day every day, and I'll explain to you. It's kind of a budget thing, so I might even bring it to the Budget Committee tonight, for next year's budget and how that can be affected by this strategy. You know, we're, we've got parameters from the state, and I like to just play on the edge of those parameters and make sure we're serving our kids better, and that's what this will be about, we'll talk about that. Yeah, thanks, other questions? Anybody?
All right, one on the six point two, Policy Committee.
Um, we met last, after the last board meeting, a couple weeks ago, and the only changes to the policies that we have presented tonight are really updated dates and names and policy number, or not the number, but statute number, thank you.
And then you'll see that five oh seven is on there this time, the criminal infringement, criminal restraint. We didn't foresee anything changing anytime soon, so we did.
We didn't, and so I've had a lot of conversations since our meeting. I had a little conversation today with Nicole, and also with Micah, and Brittany before the meeting here about that policy. And so, I'm not sure this is, well, we can talk about it now, or should we wait till we get to that policy and have the discussion at that point? About policy five oh seven?
What a way to begin to that policy discussion.
Yeah, I think it might be the right time, so... Yeah, but yeah, I guess that's, it was kind of the basic, you know, MSB's recommendations.
Yeah. And I think just for the public's knowledge, I mean, the MSB works with, they have a lawyer, and you know, they look at the Minnesota statutes that pass and legislations, and their job is to help school boards guide us in our policies and make sure that we're covering all bases, so... Appreciate you guys taking a peek at everything.
Uh, reports, Personnel Committee, we have good news, David.
We do have good news, well, it'll be updated the last time, I think. You know, our goals are still to try to increase the amount that we can provide families for healthcare insurance, we were able to do that, fifteen thousand dollars. At the same time, we're trying to decrease the incentive to not take health insurance, we were able to do that, some to decrease it from, right now, six thousand two hundred dollars to five thousand, and then four thousand five hundred, I think, in that second year. So tho, those were two of our larger goals. We were able to put, I'm trying to think of the percentages on the matrix.
Uh, well, I just went through the numbers the other day, it was three point six five for year one and three point seven two, I think it was, for year two, as far as increases, yeah.
And that doesn't mean we added three percent to the matrix, but overall, that's what the matrix is.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
Yes, so we were able to add a little bit to that, to the matrix for both years. Changed four oh three D, which is equivalent to four world candy for those not in the education world, and... Yeah, I think we changed some language there to make some things, you know, one of the pieces that we changed in the language was grandfathering in, grandfathering out, rather than the incentive not to take health insurance. So that will help us in future years, so there'll be fewer people that have fallen to that bucket. We'll have hopefully more participation in health insurance, so we can strengthen that program because we need to, so we can get insurance. Anything else that you can think of that...
I guess the only thing I would add is that the teachers did vote, and it passed at like nineties...
Ninety-four percent, almost ninety-five percent.
Yeah, so...
So very, very happy, and I don't know if you guys have been following your MSBA clips, but we are very fortunate, we're one of very few school districts in the state that have settled with their teachers' union, so I think only a third of all the teachers' unions in the state of Minnesota have settled. So I'm very, very grateful that we're in that pot of one-third, so... Again, shout out to the teachers' negotiation team, the people that we worked with on ours, Brooke and Shannon, for all the Twizzlers, you know, a few calories here and there. But we made it through, so very happy news, so I'm glad to be able to share this with all the seven of you, and six of me, and yeah, good news. All right, anything else, questions for Personnel? We really haven't talked about anything else, I was gonna remain focused, so...
We made it.
Yeah, we made it, we got it done, so very happy, very grateful. Um, six point three, Superintendent Report, it's all yours, Shannon.
All right, well, first one on there is that Minnesota Education Policy Fellowship Group that I'm part of, it was in the cities, not last week, the week before. Had a great visit, met with the Deputy Commissioner of Education, Stephanie Graff. Had some conversation with her about MBE and what MBE is doing with all this legislation and the connection between legislators passing a new law, statute, et cetera, and now MBE gets it, and what happens here? Who, who is deciding the rules of that interpretation? The rules of the engagement, I should say, about, okay, so what hoops do the schools have to jump through now to meet this legislative new statute or law for MBE? Because MBE now has to manage it, and so sometimes there is some lost in translation and/or a disconnect, because those legislators might say, that's not what we meant by that when we passed that law, and MBE says, well, it has to be because of this. So it's just interesting to watch and visit, we met with many, many staffers that are a part of that conduit, if you will, or that connection between legislators and then MBE, or would even be the Department of Labor because of the unemployment stuff and/or the FMLA changes, so the Department of Labor and legislators. So having that conversation about, where is the translation and how do we follow it, and who's really, you know, do you guys talk enough to make sure that happens? So great conversation there, and kind of learning the process. The other thing was, and I have it here somewhere, is we talked about demographics, and anyway, I've got a report here from just our region. So it's Region Four, West Central Minnesota, and the, the population and the ethnic groups that are part of it, the number of kids that go to college, associates, just graduate high school, those that get doctorates, the jobs that are most prominent in this region. Sixty-six point seven percent, so it's in this report if you wanna look at it, sixty-six point seven percent of the jobs in our Region Four, West Central Minnesota, do not require anything beyond a high school diploma. And then here are the jobs in that, okay? Oh, here's associate's degree, here's, you know, whatever. So it's just really interesting demographics and information on the, the analytics behind the economic development, it's just, it's really intriguing. So this report, one of the things we talked about then is, as, as a school system, are we preparing our kids, are we preparing them for the sixty-six point seven percent of the jobs? Are we preparing them fifteen percent going to college? Do we prepare them for that? Yeah, you know, and so on. So looking at our CTE piece, which was a part of the world's best workforce, which is something we've been talking about here for a couple of years, preparing them for what's next, right? And so are we giving our high school students the right information? And being honest, because here's career earnings with a high school diploma, here's career earnings with a doctorate. Well, short of being a doctor or a lawyer, your career earnings are a whole lot different, because you didn't have school loans, you didn't have this, you didn't have that. So it's interesting, and there's just a bunch of information that we can share with our juniors and seniors, so when they leave, they at least are making an educated decision, right? And they have the information, so they might have a passion, and it has nothing to do with money. That's great, that's fine, right? And some, just so they know where they will be. If that's what they pursue, if that's what they complete, if that's the degree or whatever they want, so... Anyway, it was just, yeah, good stuff. Yeah, very, very interesting, so, yeah, there was some other stuff with that too, but those were the highlights, I guess, of that couple days. Staff survey, this is, and I gave you guys all a copy of this. This is gonna go to all the teachers tomorrow afternoon, actually, and all the teachers are gonna fill out this survey for their building principal, their lead principal, so this is for Wayne, Kent, and for Joe, and it's gonna be anonymous. They can fill this out, it's all, it's gonna be in a Google form, and it's an anonymous way that they can respond and talk about how they feel their leaders doing. I told our principals about a month ago that this was gonna be a part of their midterm evaluation and would also be part of their final evaluation. We have a bunch of directors in our district as well. That, that evaluation survey, Brooke and I worked on it today. That will go out probably in January. So for Chase with his custodians and his maintenance, Shannon and Oek for her kitchen staff, they will have something similar to this, and I'll use it for their midterm and final evaluation, so... Anyway, it's just a tool, I wanted to make sure you guys knew what we were doing. Health and safety, we met last Wednesday, the committee did. Talked a lot about our language, about lockdown versus hallway closure, and I think we've talked about this... Health and Safety, we met last Wednesday, the committee did, talked a lot about our language about lockdown versus hallway closure, and I think we've talked about this a little bit here at the board level as well. There will be some information coming out from our middle school and high school and elementary to parents, so they understand what they are and the differences and why we would do a hallway closure. Oh, there's a medical emergency for a kid or whatever, an adult. So anyway, those things are going to be spelled out a little bit better, and we're going to communicate it better than when these things happen. Sometimes we won't share because it's something that's more personal to somebody, we don't want to bring leg to it, but a hallway closure will be shared. I think you guys have seen that in the last couple of weeks, at least at high school level. And I think the first one that went down was a lockdown, which I didn't want it to say, because then people freak out. In today's world, when they hear lockdown, that means different things to different people, so just making sure terminology is clear and that information will go out. That was a hot topic. The other thing is Narcan is now going to be more available in our building if we ever needed it, and the nurses just got approved through the county that they can also administer. For a while, they were not allowed to, if you can believe it. A nurse, I know, well, yeah, that's our old conversation, same thing. The nurse can't administer it, but now they can. So that was, that was.
Is it going to be available after school?
Yeah.
Because I foresee that more public coming in being.
Yeah, we had that very conversation. So what we're doing, and so Katie and Joe and anybody that's going to work at events, you can see the A E D from here, it will be in there. So wherever there's an A E D in our building, that's what we're going to house it. So it'll be available in all these areas where the public may be. Yep, good question. Health and Safety, oh, we also went through the Fire Marshal's report, there was, little Chase went through that whole list with them, and it was very minimal, and that was nice, so. What else? District, oh, the new leadership, so I met with Leanne Gifford and Keely Gada, Coda, sorry, oh, I knew it. Coda, met with them Wednesday also, that's Wednesday. Great, great ladies, talked a lot about education, shared my philosophy of of the district and where I want to go and and just kind of my experiences with education, and they shared a little bit, too, and it was the first, it's kind of that meet and greet, so they get to know kind of what their leaders are like and how I like to operate. And so it was a very positive meeting, so that was good. I got, yeah, last one on here is the automated fee notification. Some of you maybe got one, hopefully you didn't, but if you did, it means you owed something in the last number of years. We have already had two hundred people respond and pay.
Oh, that's awesome.
Out of fifteen hundred. So hey, we're hitting somewhere, and it could be higher than that, I don't know, I didn't check with John today, the latest greatest, but so if you have any fee for lunch or anything.
Skate time.
Skate time.
Yeah, I had packs, and I swear I paid it, but yeah. It's done now.
Yeah, so you're one of the two hundred things. Anyway, yeah, and if you have record, obviously those people watching tonight, if you have record that you paid it, then you paid it, but our system shows this, and we have so many outstanding bills, and I always say inspect what you expect. We expect people to pay if there's a fee. If they don't, we're going to inspect it, and if not, we'll send you a reminder, so. If you think you've got a reminder and you shouldn't have, please let us know, we want to clean it up that way, too. Okay? So there you go. Anything else or questions for me?
Just a question on the roof. Was I able to?
If you maybe noticed the image drove up, they were here today. They were working on finishing some stuff up. Chase and I met this morning about that very topic, because I knew they were been here, so I just didn't know where their status was. They're struggling to get their sheet metal guy to finish up some sheet metal capping. The response they gave Chase and I today is that they would be here on site today doing some other things, and the sheet metal guys, if you will, because that's how he's referred to them, the sheet metal guys, they would be in the next week or two, but they still were going to be doing it, so. Yeah, great question.
Any other questions for Shannon? All right, let's move on to approval of the November fourteenth meeting. Do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy, all those in favor say aye.
I oppose.
Motion carries. Consent agenda, claims and accounts for.
Six hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. I will say a huge chunk of that, four hundred twenty thousand was.
Okay, also included in your packet is your Treasurer's monthly budget report, and we are approving the donation from Pender Transportation of the use of a bus and trailer for the F F A pumpkin picking. Do we have a motion? So moved. Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Laura, all those in favor say aye.
I oppose.
Motion carries. New and unfinished business, this is nine point one, Policies. This is to approve the second reading of the following policies. I'm going to read them all, and then we can have discussion. Two oh nine, Code of Ethics. Two ten, Conflict of Interest. Two eleven, Criminal or Civil Action Against School District Board Member, Employer Student. Two twelve, School Board Development. Two thirteen, School Board Committees. Two fourteen, Out of State Travel by School Board Members. Three oh one, School District Administration. Three oh two, Superintendent, and five oh seven, Corporal Punishment and Prone Restraint. Let's do a motion and a second, we'll have discussion. Do you have a motion? Motion by Laura, is there a second? Second by Micah? All right, let's have some discussion. I know in particular, we want to talk about five oh seven, Corporal Punishment and Prone Restraint.
I have some thoughts on that one. I think as a school board, I feel that it's inappropriate for us to govern or dictate rules, policies, or procedures for professionals already regulated by the state government through statutes and other state boards. So my recommendation would be to remove any reference to law enforcement and S R Os from our policy, because they're already governed in a different part of the state.
I'll just add, oh, sorry, go ahead, Laura.
I was just with the five oh seven, is that something that is learned through like C P I training for staff? Is that something totally separate?
Yeah, it's, C P I, I guess you could say, because it does talk about school officials, and their C P I training is is a part of a staff member's training, potentially, not everybody's, but some. The prone restraint would never come into play with C P I, and C P I, the physical holds are like the last resort, which in this policy are allowed. The one thing about this policy, as you guys know, we've tabled this one for most of the fall here, because waiting for the state to either have a special session or rewrite it. They've simplified it a little bit, and they're not going to meet again, they're abundantly clear on that, they're going to bring it up at the next session. And it's all about, unfortunately, the S R Os, because they're agents of the school, they're not allowed to put somebody in a prone position. Well, there's more to it than just that, but to simplify that, they're not going to change it. We don't have an S R O because of the current language. We are going to, anyway, I just don't need to get into it super deep, but to to Nicole's point, if we pull the S R O S R O out of this policy, it's not changing any of our daily practice, because we don't have one now. So I think it does make sense to take it out, because we don't have it anyway, and if we were to add it, let's say next year the law changes, there's new language, well, then we'll evaluate the language at that point, as with the county. I mean, we're in constant contact with the county about this policy. We met with Mark Amping and his team two, two or three different times, and it's just, this is not going to happen.
And I can tell you that, like, as law enforcement, we are governed to the same degree. I just think it's inappropriate for a school board to try to dictate something, whether it's a nursing staff. It would be silly to me, it'd be similar to if our post board decided to come in and say, well, as an S R O, now you as a teacher are regulated to do these things, and so the post board can say, okay, well, if an S R O is in the classroom, then the teacher has to do X, Y, and Z. That's just ridiculous. Nobody in the post board has that same qualification as somebody in M D E, so I think that's where that should be governed, and I think that post board, the peace officer standards and training should be regulating peace officers. So I think it's inappropriate for our school to get involved in something regulated already by the state, so that's my personal feelings.
Very good point. So I guess, I guess to me, as a superintendent, what Nicole's recommending here and taking it out does not change her practice every day, and for that reason, I would agree with what she's recommending, I guess.
So we have a motion and a second with adjustment on five oh seven. Does anybody have any more discussion about removing the S R O wording from the language? I'm not sure what, how you want to verbiage that or what.
Yep, I did, we did visit today, Lindsay, Brooke and I did visit about that and the language and where it did read that, and.
It would be law enforcement and S R O, because those are not necessarily.
Okay, second. I can work that. So David, you're expert, should we just, should I do that one separate? Or should I just put it in a motion?
No, I should just make motion, amend the motion so that policy five oh seven is S R O, law enforcement excluded from the policy.
All right, whatever David said. And.
Wilson.
Policy five oh seven, remove law enforcement and S R O. All right, we have a motion by Laura, second by Micah, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I oppose.
Motion carries. Nine point two, this is to approve the first and only reading of the following policies. Four thirteen, Harassment and Violence. Four sixteen, Drug, Alcohol, and Cannabis Testing. Five oh six, Student Discipline. Five fifteen, Protection and Privacy of People Records Form. Six oh six point five, Library Materials. And six twenty, Credit For Working. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany, any questions or discussion?
Did we, on that six twenty, fill in that credit? I think, was that the missing part that we were talking about?
That's a great question. Brooke and I talked about it, did we change it? Okay, good, yeah, because we went by the handbook. Yeah. Thank you, Brittany.
Perfect. Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, legalization of marijuana and soda, how is D G F navigating drug testing?
Yep, well, the passing of that is still restricted on school grounds and all that, so, and school property and those types of things, so our, so our policy that we have for the alcohol, drug, and I can't remember the policy, I'm sorry, does already address it, and that wouldn't have to change. Thank you, yeah, good question.
Any other questions? Motion by Nicole, second by Brittany, all those in favor say aye.
I oppose.
Motion carries. Nine point three, this is Non-Certified Contract for Christina Leach, Food Service Class Three Step Four, effective November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Do we have a motion? Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by Laura, any question or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I oppose.
Motion carries. Nine point four, this is a part of the World's Best Workforce Summary Report, as presented, do we have a motion? Motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Micah, any further question or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I oppose.
Motion carries. Nine point five, this is the F Y twenty-four, F Y twenty-five Master Agreement between Interspendons School District Twenty-one sixty-four and E M D G F. Do we have a motion? Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I oppose.
Motion carries. Nine point six is a non-certified contract for Angeline, Angela Sager, Food Service Class One Step Five, effective November twenty-seventh. Do we have a motion? Motion by Laura, is there a second? Second by Brittany, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I oppose.
Motion carries. Next board meeting will be Monday, December eighteen, just to point out, this is our one and only meeting of the month. Following that meeting will be Personnel, and that's about it. Anything else, team?
Well, just to add on that December eighteen.
Yep.
It's it's going to be in here now, isn't it, not in the conference room?
Oh, we got to change the word.
Yep, so it's going to be.
Community.
We're still in the conference room.
It's still.
Oh, there's that.
Choir concert, too.
Nope, we moved the choir concert, so the choir concert is now on the eleventh. They moved that, so we could have this.
I just got an email from Middle School Choir that we had, I have a high school choir concert at seven o'clock on the eleventh and a middle school choir concert at seven o'clock on eighteen.
I'm not aware of that.
Well, I could have it wrong.
You're probably right.
I totally could have that.
We've had some discussions with the high school, because their schedule.
Tommy emailed me that it has changed, but I still have Lily's down for it.
Everybody just let me know if you have conflicts, yeah. Well, it's not till seven, so I'm still here.
The other thing was, also, the December board meeting is also our truth and taxation meeting.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So that will be a part of that, I wanted to make sure we told the public that today as well.
Veronica's watching, I look forward to seeing you.
Yes.
All right, and then if if there is a concert that needs, maybe Personnel, Nicole, David, and I could meet at five.
Yep.
What was I thinking? Fifth, sixth, grade start at six, seventh, eighth, grade start at seven.
Okay, so why don't we do, why don't we do this? Can we do five o'clock for our Personnel meeting, David and Nicole?
Yes.
Just for me.
Okay, we'll do five o'clock, followed by the meeting, and then everybody get to their concert session, and that is so.
Perfect.
All right, it is six forty-four, meeting adjourned.
So they'll be up fifth or sixth graders, because that'll affect, they'll be in there at the same time.
I do know.
So the board meeting has to stay at six.
Six, because of truth and taxation.
I know, you posted.
All right, six forty-five now. Six forty-five.